Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. We will enforce 11 o'clock rule. Hopefully, we won't be that late. I will call the meeting to order now, and we'll have the pledge of allegiance. David, would you lead us?
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one of our councilors is going to be with us tonight online, so we'll be doing a roll call in person.
Doug Glasbell?
Present.
Dave Frank?
Present.
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
J. David Reed?
Present.
Anthony Russo?
Present.
All city council members are present.
All right, thank you. Any changes to the agenda or additions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on item number six of the consent agenda on approval of minutes for our July 19th special meeting and the July 20th regular city council meeting, we would like to split those into two separate items since one of our members was not present before the regular city council meeting.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll have a call to anyone who would like to speak on a non-agenda item. If you would like to speak at this time on another subject, please raise your hand, and I'll call you up to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the next item. And that's approval of the minutes of the two meetings we've had. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the minutes of the July 19th special city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Do we need to vote in person?
We need to do a roll call voting, if that's all right. And Doug Glasbell?
Here.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glasbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Our next action item is for the motion to approve the July 19th regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the July 20th regular city council meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second that. Doug Glasbell?
I was not present.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
We have four in favor and one abstaining.
Thank you. Our next item this evening is the item number seven, mobile home park permit application and proposed city financial contribution. This is a city council consideration of mobile home park permit application for Cottonwood Mobile Home Park, San Juan Mobile Home Park, and Green Acres Mobile Home Park, and requested financial incentives. Deputy City Manager Anne Morgan Thaler.
Thank you. May I please be promoted to panelist to share my screen? Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're talking about three applications for mobile home park permits and also one request for financial incentives to support the overall project. This is a timeline of this project thus far for the review process. I started working with the applicant back in June of 2020, when the applicant called our planning division and asked for information about these mobile home parks and our criteria and our review process, and it's taken just over a year to get to you, as some background about how much time has gone into this project, and many thanks to the applicant for working with us along the way. On June 9th this year, 2021, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved the mobile home park permits. This is an application process that goes to Planning Commission first and then goes to city council. The language in our code is a little funny on this, where actually Planning Commission approves it, and then you also review it. Sometimes they make a recommendation to you, but that's not a typo. It's what it is in our code, so they did approve it. Also, at that same meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved a variance application. The variance is to standards within our mobile home park criteria that this application just couldn't meet, and that's because of the existing conditions at the site. There are existing conditions on these sites that cannot be changed. For example, the size of the overall lot of the site cannot be enlarged where it is in order to meet the criteria in our mobile home park standards. So the Planning Commission reviewed that variance application. There's also a request for some variations to sign guidelines, and the Planning Commission approved that variance. You, as city council, do not review a variance application, so you're only reviewing the mobile home park permits. But it's important for you to know that the Planning Commission did review and approve that application, because without doing that, this mobile home park permit application isn't possible. There's no way that these mobile home parks, as they exist, could meet all of the standards in our code for mobile home parks. On July 19th, at a city council work session, you had a general review of the application components. I gave some information about the application, and Rich Dana, the applicant, also shared information with you. Generally, I'll share more details tonight. And also, the applicant asked for financial support of the application, and on July 19th, we proposed $250,000 of support. And council, at the time, you were generally supportive of that level of financial contribution and indicated that perhaps you would support even a higher level of contribution, and so we'll be talking about that tonight as well, about ways that the city council could partner on this project to make these much-needed and significant improvements in our community. And that takes us to tonight. August 3rd, you're reviewing three mobile home park permit applications and one funding As general background about what mobile homes are and how our code defines them and what a mobile home park is, a mobile home is a single-family home substantially or entirely manufactured in a factory, and it's moved onsite either in one component part or in multiple parts. Often, these are called manufactured homes, and they're different than modular homes. But for the purposes of our code, we're talking about manufactured homes, and we're really talking about single-family homes, so there's the possibility for manufactured homes to be duplexes as well, sometimes even multifamily. A mobile home park means any single or contiguous lots, tracts, or premises upon which is located two or more mobile homes. So this means that usually, there's one parcel, and on that one parcel, there are at least two or more mobile homes. That's different than some neighborhoods you might see, where there's a parcel with one mobile home and next to it, another parcel with another mobile home. Those are not mobile home parks. A mobile home park is one parcel with multiple mobile homes on the same parcel, and that's what we're talking about tonight. So there are individual parcels, and there are multiple mobile homes on them, on what are called spaces. And so those spaces are not conveyable to the owner of the mobile home. Usually, the owner of the mobile home rents a space and pays rent to the owner of the entire mobile home park. Sometimes, the mobile home park owner owns mobile homes and rents those out to people. There are various ways for mobile home parks to operate, but it is, again, different than a neighborhood where you might see someone own their parcel and have a mobile home on As some background about our mobile home park permit requirements, the mobile home park regulations were adopted in 1979 in our city code. They've been modified over time. They're currently in municipal code section 412.5 and 412.6. The regulations are very geared towards creating mobile home parks with large lots and spaces, lots of lot area around one single mobile home. Mobile home parks in existence prior to 1979 do not have mobile home park permits, so there were mobile home parks in existence. The city adopted new regulations with the idea of creating certain types of mobile home parks, and those mobile home parks that already existed have continued to exist, but didn't get brought into our regulations, and that's what we're doing now, is we're bringing these mobile home parks into our regulations, which require a mobile home park permit in order to enlarge a mobile home park or replace mobile homes. So over time, there are mobile home parks in our community that have existed, and the city's stance has been that if these mobile home parks want to replace mobile homes or bring in brand-new mobile homes, they need a mobile home park permit in order to do it. Dilapidated or vacant mobile homes can be removed, but usually, mobile home park owners want to keep those mobile homes in service as long as they can, because they generate rent and they're a housing unit. And so the city's stance, just like I said, has been that you have to go through the mobile home park permit process in order to bring in new mobile homes or replace mobile homes. And because our mobile home park regulations are not geared towards these existing parks, it's been a conflict, and it's been a struggle for property owners and the city to make much headway on this issue in our community. There are 11 mobile home parks in city limits, and four have mobile home park permits. San Juan, Green Acres, and Cottonwood Mobile Home Parks, which you're considering tonight, are all owned by the same entity, and they do not have mobile home park permits. Some additional background, so over time, in all of these mobile home parks, it just happens that there's an increased number of dilapidated mobile homes, overgrown vegetation, junk, parking issues, non-permitted additions, so think about maybe lean-to sheds that have been built adjacent to mobile homes, emergency access challenges, and these have continued over years, and it creates a really challenging environment for tenants in mobile home parks, for the city, for law enforcement, and for owners of mobile home parks to start making improvements in the parks, because from the city's standpoint, we want things to be better, but we also don't want to do anything that jeopardizes someone being able to stay in their mobile home or in their housing unit. So starting in 2019, with a lot of community input from people here in the room, the city started talking internally as staff about how do we address this? Where do we start? What do we start with? And we formed a committee of city staff members to review the issues surrounding mobile home parks and Montrose. The purpose was to study the inventory and the conditions of the current mobile home parks and determine a plan to address those issues. For example, you know, planning and code enforcement really need to work together as opposed to targeting a park separately in a way that might actually make the problem worse or make an owner or a tenant frustrated and less likely to comply. So we started talking about that. Hate to say it, but then COVID happened, and so it wasn't a great climate for us to continue working on that issue. There are lots of other pressing needs in our community, but also during COVID, we realized how important it is that these mobile home parks are further improved and that water, sewer, and health safety issues are also improved. Mobile home parks offer a relatively inexpensive housing option for residents in our community, and it's our goal to make those living conditions better, to not eliminate people's homes or displace people or create negative consequences for residents. In the recent past, current owners of mobile home parks and prospective owners of mobile home parks have contacted the city and have been interested in bringing in new mobile homes, but really not very interested in making these much-needed improvements. So when Mr. Dana contacted us last summer, we had already been primed with everything I just talked to you about, about understanding that there were really significant issues that needed to be addressed. We had an idea of our priorities at the city, and so we were able to work with the applicant to try and navigate our somewhat outdated regulations and get to this point today where we're proposing some variations and also a path forward. So now getting into the project background, again, there are three mobile home parks that Mr. Dana is proposing to apply for mobile home park permit. They're all located within the manufactured housing residential districts, so legal uses by right in those zoning districts. The applicant is committing to very significant infrastructure improvements. I'll discuss those in some detail, but again, I'll lean on the applicant to share more with you about the improvements that he's going to make. The applicant seeks variances for all of the parks, which he obtained, a variance to the sign setback, which he obtained, and now he's seeking the final approval for the mobile home park permits for all of the parks and the financial support from the city. This is a vicinity map of the mobile home parks. It's pointing north, and highlighted in yellow are the three parks. So you see Cottonwood up to the north and east, and then on San Juan Avenue are Green Acres, San Juan, and Green Acres. Those parks are adjacent to one another. This is another park, or another map, excuse me, from the applicant's presentation, looking east, that shows the parks, so Cottonwood, Green Acres, and San Juan. And there are many improvements and application components included in this application, but essentially, the applicant is proposing to remove 47 abandoned mobile homes, two single-family homes and nine apartments that just are not inhabitable anymore. This is a big benefit, because unfortunately, the longer that those vacant and uninhabitable mobile homes stay in place, the more likely that they are to be used for crimes and other activities that do not promote the health, safety, and welfare of these neighborhoods or of other neighbors or of our community as a whole. So this is a very important part of this project, to get those mobile homes out of there and the dilapidated single-family homes and apartments as well. Then the applicant will be bringing in 77 new mobile homes eventually, after making a lot of improvements. So this is a benefit, because there will be new housing units available to community members in our community in spaces that already exist. These are not new subdivisions. They will be brought up to be nice, livable communities, and then there'll be more units in them. There will also be general park maintenance, so trash and debris will be removed and enforced for the long term as a requirement of this permit. Drainage will be improved. There'll be new streetlights, new fire hydrants, very important. Tiny homes will be allowed to be located in these parks as part of this permit process. We don't know yet if the applicant will want to do that, but a tiny home is similar to a mobile home. It's usually constructed to different standards, but they are constructed toward, to building codes. They're safe to live in, and perhaps people might want to bring in one of their tiny homes that they already have, located in the mobile home park and live in our community. The applicant is, oh, go ahead.
One clarification, on the tiny homes, that any tiny home that is going to be included into this project would be required to meet all of Montrose County and Montrose City building codes?
Yes, and sometimes there are actually separate building codes. Those tiny homes are often built onsite at a separate location, and so there's a separate part of the building code that they can meet there, but we do verify that they get the inspection in order for us to approve that before it's located onsite. And on a foundation, not on wheels in this case, different than tiny homes that are used like RVs. The applicant is proposing to keep lot fees for all existing residents, people who are living in these mobile home parks right now, stable for two years as these improvements are made. Go ahead.
Do you know when that two years begins?
I don't, but I can ask the applicant. We can specify.
I would just like us to get some clarity, so there's not a misunderstanding that that begins tonight, or that begins upon completion of the work, or that begins when construction start, just some very definitive timeline.
I'd propose that we start it when the mobile home park permit is issued, and have a timeline for the things that need to be completed when that happens, but it's a really good point, and right now, that'd be my proposal, but I bookmarked it. So those lot fees would stay stable, so as construction is happening in the mobile home parks, water and sewer are being improved, and there's transition, the applicant has proposed this on his own, to keep those lot fees stable for people who are already living there. It is possible, if I move into the mobile home park during that construction, that my lot fees would not be stable, because I'm a new resident. There will be new parks included. Road and emergency access will be improved. The applicant will talk more about that. He has photos as well about the access through the parks that's unsafe right now. That includes removing and not allowing cars to park in the middle of passageways and roads. Water and sewer improvements, this is, to me, the crux of this application, because right now, there are some residents who report that they cannot do simple sanitary tasks in their home, because the water doesn't work and the sewer doesn't work. So all new water and sewer system in the three mobile home parks will be installed. There will be a lot of landscaping, removal of trees, removal of dead debris that's piled up in these mobile home parks. And one thing to note, we've worked together on this. Overall, there are a lot of things that have happened over time in the mobile home parks that we can't fix with this application. So we are not proposing to pick up mobile homes and move them to be better located. It's just not feasible. The same thing exists with the accessory structures that I was mentioning. There are some tenants who have constructed little sheds behind mobile homes, or like I mentioned, maybe a lean-to shed that's adjacent to those mobile homes. In some cases, building permits were not obtained. In some cases, those sheds are too close to the next-door mobile home. We can't fix all of that, and this is one thing that we realized when we first started trying to figure out a path forward. And so what we're proposing instead is that from here on out, there will not be any more of those structures allowed, and through good oversight of these mobile home parks and good oversight from the city, we feel like that can happen. So the existing ones can stay, but when new mobile homes are moved in, they won't be able to have an accessory structure, a little shed in the back. I know this is kind of disappointing to some people, because we all like extra storage for our stuff, but ultimately, these are very dense neighborhoods with lots of units already placed, and continuing to allow these additions actually is a safety hazard, so we're trying to limit that moving forward.
And if one of those existing buildings is there, and they change out the existing mobile home that's next to it, will those then, at that point in time, be able to be cleaned up and changed?
Yes, mhm, yes. Also, along those lines, another thing we can't fix is the fact that in some cases, actual mobile homes are closer than 10 feet from one another, but in the future, all new mobile homes will have to be 10 feet from an adjacent mobile home, and if that's not possible, there are ways for structures to be fire-rated in a way that they can meet those setback requirements and meet fire code, even if they're less than 10 feet, and so we're being flexible on that element as well, while still providing for health and safety in these environments. So these, I wanted to include a list of really just all of the variances that the applicant sought and received, because it gives you an idea of the types of accommodations that the Planning Commission was willing to grant for this application, including the park size, the minimum distance of parks from other mobile home parks. The minimum space size is meant to be 6,250 square feet. I think that most spaces in these existing mobile home parks are like 1,500 or 2,000 square feet, so much smaller than is required. The setbacks I discussed, the applicant will talk about how we work together to solve some parking issues. It's not feasible to have two off-street parking spaces in most ways, irrigated lawn, and then park in open space. So staff is recommending approval of these mobile home park permits based on the variances and the other criteria in the code. We are proposing three really big conditions of approval, and they're included in your packet, and if you follow the motions that we're recommending and you approve them with the associated conditions, then you'll include all of these. But essentially, they're related to the civil plans that we still are awaiting from the mobile home park applicant, the demolition and removal of mobile homes, and the ongoing maintenance of the parks, and then also infrastructure improvements, and I'll go through that a little bit more here, so you know why we included those conditions and what they mean. But this is the process for next steps of this application. Council would approve the mobile home park permit applications and potentially financial support, and within one year of that approval, if you make a motion based on our conditions, the applicant is required to submit complete civil plans to the city engineer. The applicant has started actually pretty specific civil plans, but without a mobile home park permit in hand, was reluctant to spend any more money getting really detailed plans for water, sewer, roads. So we've given the applicant one year after your approval to submit those to the city. I know he intends to submit them much quicker than that, but in these days, who knows what's going to happen, and so we thought a year seemed reasonable. After that, and we approved those civil plans, we'd actually issue the mobile home park permit. So until he submits those plans to us, he has your approval, but he doesn't have the permit yet. There's still this outstanding item. And after the issuance of the mobile home park permit, then he has two years to complete improvements, and those are all the improvements I outlined, but in this green box, you'll see it's the removal of all of the uninhabitable mobile homes, the water and sewer distribution network, building that, improvements to the roadway and emergency access, drainage, lighting, fire hydrants, park improvements, and the paving is specified to occur within three years, because it's really the last step. So after everything goes in, then the paving could happen within three years. So when those improvements are completed, then the applicant may place new mobile homes. And we know that that is enticing to the applicant, and he's eager to make these improvements for existing residents, but also to get those new mobile homes in, and we're eager too, to have new places for people to live. But if those improvements are not made within two years, the mobile home park permit is void, and then new mobile homes cannot be placed. Now, if something strange happens, the applicant can always come back to Planning Commission and come back to you and ask for an extension, so we know that that's possible, and there might be a good reason for it, but we wanted to acknowledge that if nothing happens, if none of the improvements go through that we are really counting on, then the applicant can't bring in new mobile homes. And then there's ongoing maintenance required by the mobile home park permit that the applicant is bound by, and the city can also lean on to enforce if anything happens in the parks inconsistent with that permit. And it will be an ongoing relationship. We're already talking between the applicant and the city about partnerships moving forward, and the police department, and how those relationships have worked, and code enforcement, and how we can help each other. So I'll jump now to financial support, this request for financial support. So I outlined all of the improvements and the reasons why staff supports the approval of the mobile home park permits. This project is estimated to cost $4.4 million. This is an updated figure from what's in your packet. In your packet, it's $4.1 million, but the applicant received updated bids since then, so costs are not going down on this project or many construction projects right now. We talked on July 19th about potentially a $250,000 city contribution. Council indicated that additional financial support beyond that would be considered, and so right now, we're proposing to you, absolutely your discretion, a $500,000 contribution to support the removal of the mobile homes, really in the form of asbestos remediation and water and sewer infrastructure installation. And I'll switch to this here, so you can see the overall costs. These are also in your packet, but for the $4.1 million number.
And just for the public's information, that $300,000 that's proposed on top of the $200,000, that comes from a different fund. Can you just explain that really quick?
Yes, so we're proposing a total of $500,000, and sorry to jump around a little bit, but I wanted to make sure I showed you that we do have those numbers in the packet about all of the costs. But what we're proposing could happen is that $200,000 could be allocated from the general fund. There's undesignated fund balance. It's like a big savings account at the city, and city council could allocate $200,000 to support this project using that funding. And yesterday at the work session, Kendall Kramer discussed with you the funding available from the American Rescue Plan Act, and we're proposing $300,000 could be used there. Our research shows that asbestos abatement is an eligible expense for American Rescue Plan Act funding, but also what is very clear is that water and sewer is definitely eligible. And so possibly, you know, you could use $300,000 towards the water and sewer. And so possibly, you know, you could use $300,000 towards the water and sewer. It seems like that's very clear. And then the $200,000 from the general fund for asbestos abatement.
And that $300,000 comes from where?
Oh, from the federal government. Yes, sorry. That the feds gave to us to do good things with. And this is directly in line with the guidance that we received to make communities safer, healthier environments to live, especially during COVID, having failing water and sewer and abandoned mobile homes where people were squatting and living and trash was gathering is a health hazard. And so using this funding would improve the specific mobile home parks, but also definitely the neighborhoods and our community as a whole is a safer and healthier place. And we did talk about, and I'll switch to that next, the kind of budget items too, but we did talk with the applicant about in-kind support, such as the city maybe hauling debris using our trash trucks. And it's possible that we could do that without your approval. Right now, what's most valuable to the applicant is this financial contribution to help bring down the costs of the project. We are committed to helping him along the way. And if it happens that there's a bunch of debris and we can come in there and we can haul it over a couple of days, I think the city is very happy to do that. But in the bigger picture, this financial contribution helps ensure that the project moves forward. And we would, of course, ensure if you would like to use American Rescue Plan Act dollars, we'd of course ensure that it's used in compliance with the guidance. And now back to this budget, but I just wanted to point out to you that the asbestos abatement, this is in your packet, is right now estimated to be $419,000. So if general fund dollars were used for asbestos abatement, $200,000, it would go towards this cost. It wouldn't cover all of the asbestos abatement. It would go towards it. Also, $300,000 towards water and sewer would go towards the $513,000 for new water lines and the almost $1 million for new sewer lines. If you wanted to combine these items in any different way, I'm sure the applicant is pleased to talk with you about that. And I don't think it really matters to him, and it certainly doesn't matter to us what the city funds. But one note is that the city never pays individuals or the owners of properties. The city pays contractors after work is completed, and this would be the same. So after work is completed, the city would pay a contractor for that specific type of work. And then the recommendation is approval, and there are some motions on your agenda. You will please make one motion for each of the parks. So you'll make one for Cottonwood, one for San Juan, and one for Green Acres approving the mobile home park permits. And then you'll make one motion approving a financial contribution. And we included just a draft motion with some general fund dollars and American Rescue Plan dollars. If you'd like to do that a different way and you need our assistance drafting a motion, just please let us know.
And typical of our process and what we have done in the past, as far as percentages are concerned, I know we talked about this in the work session, what percentage has the city contributed in the past to a project like this?
Thank you. Sorry for not mentioning that. It has ranged, but when I looked back, there were some times when the city had contributed up to 15% for a project to help with things like asbestos abatement. Sometimes it's lower than that. And this comes in with the new number at about 11% of the total project costs.
It's in compliance with our normal procedure, and that our normal procedure is to, in order to benefit the public safety, health, and welfare of our citizens, that we do consider funding removal of asbestos pretty consistently.
Yes, it's an onerous process, and oftentimes, whether it's residential or for commercial reasons, it can, the presence of asbestos makes people nervous about proceeding with projects and putting buildings back into adaptive reuse. That's usually what we see downtown. In this case, it's really a demolition issue, but for the same thing that you just explained.
Anne, I have one question. When we get ready to vote on these four items, do you have dollar figures to put in item one on this?
I would propose that you would have $200,000 from the general fund and $300,000 from the American Rescue Plan, but I left it blank so that you could decide.
Any other questions for the staff?
I'd love you to just talk to just a little bit again for the public is the safety concerns when it comes to these mobile park homes and the police work that has to go on there and the impact that they have on just, I guess, having calls out there and the general safety of the community, cost.
Yeah, I'm happy to, and I might also invite Chief Hall to talk. I was looking back at some records today for one of these mobile home parks, and we had received over 20 very serious calls at one mobile home in 2020, and already off to a handful of calls in 2021. That's just in one challenged spot. So Chief Hall, thank you for coming.
I think our record is 82 calls involving one party, and we were able to work with the owners and get them evicted.
I think too, it kind of comes back to that community policing philosophy and the broken windows theory. So once you have one broken window in a neighborhood and it's not fixed, then it turns into two broken windows, it turns into something else. And next thing you know, you have a crime element that continues to exist and get larger. So, you know, it's definitely a cost issue with our officers, it's a manpower issue, but it's also a quality of life issue for the tenants that live in those parks. And I think a lot of them are good, honest, hardworking people, and this is a great project all the way around.
Thank you. Any other questions for the staff? Would the applicant care to come forward and make a few comments? Please state your name and address.
Thanks for having me. My name's Rich Dana, and my address is 5459 Illini Way, Boulder, Colorado. It's I-L-L-I-N-I. I went through the presentation the last time we spoke, and I think Anne did a fantastic job kind of running you through the project. Would you like me to run through the, would you like me to run through the presentation today?
Are you open to condensed version, or please let the applicant know what you'd like to hear from him?
I think it'd be good to hear your report on it and your...
Hear the report, because I met with you guys at the working session two weeks ago, which would be largely similar.
More of a summation.
More of a summation. I can just kind of go through it quickly.
And we find that more of the public watch these council meetings instead of the work sessions. So even though you did give us a very thorough presentation, I think just so the public understands perhaps where our vote might come from, I think it would be helpful to kind of hear what your vision is and what you're willing to do for these mobile home parks.
And I'm happy to give the complete presentation. It's no problem at all.
Somewhere between complete and short.
Sounds good. I'll be efficient. So as you know, I'm Rich Dana. I'm the applicant for the three parks. I know there's been questions asked about, well, is Rich doing this on his own? There's three main partners to the project. I'm the one running point on it. So I'm basically the public face of the application. Then there's two other partners that I've been partners with on other projects that are doing this with me. As Anne talked about, it's really three parks. Green Acres and San Juan are adjacent to each other, and we will connect them with paths and a road. So Cottonwood's about 15 acres. San Juan, Green Acres is about eight acres combined. As we talked about before, I've color-coded every pad and what the pad status is for each one. And so yellow is occupied. Blue has to be demolished or is an abandoned trailer. And red is a vacant lot. In addition to that, the stick-built units, there's two at Cottonwood. One's occupied, one needs to be rehabilitated. And at San Juan, Green Acres, really in the San Juan section, there's the two old motels. And there's two abandoned houses, and those will be demolished. And then there's one additional stick-built home right next to the park that we will rehabilitate and make livable. Total loss of pads in Cottonwood would be one by eliminating three pads, which we'll talk about a little further. And then total loss of pads in the San Juan, Green Acre would be four. Next slide, please. Three opportunities. Again, Anne and Chief Hall hit on some of them, but basically, you know, community cleanup, the broken window theory is absolutely true. I'm, the last time I was in the park about two weeks ago, trash pile was here, owner cleaned it up, new trash pile over here. So it's gone from pad 81, which used to be a dump, to now like pad 165 or kind of in that range. And that's in Cottonwood. Cottonwood just has a continual problem of people just dumping furniture everywhere. And once we get it cleaned up and we set a standard for the community, it's going to be, I suspect it'll be much nicer, and we will run a very tight ship. Better living environment for the residents, better living environment for the neighbors. And then one of the biggest bonuses I see for the parks is just to create more affordable housing stock within the city. You know, I get the, I get the daily paper, and I was reading just the other day, they're having a hard time with teachers finding housing here. I know in speaking with Anne, the hospital has a hard time finding housing for staff as well. And in general, you know, a lot of the people in the lower level or lower end of the income scale and mantras that provide a lot of the services to this community and the surrounding communities just don't have a place to live. And it's expensive, and it's, you know, from what I understand in talking to the property manager who currently manages it, they have an average of 20 calls a day for people looking for rental properties. And they don't have any, but that's what the demand is. Next slide, please. We talked about the original galvanized piping. All the infrastructure is effectively original in the park. So galvanized piping, 40 to 50 years, if it's really, if it really lasts a long time, we're over 60. Same with the Orangeburg sewer piping, which doesn't last that long, also original piping. Maintenance on the Orangeburg sewer piping is monthly, where we have to go in and dig it out. And I know the excavator that's going to do my work did a repair there last week. Sewages bubble to the surface on occasion. As Anne mentioned, if you're downstream from somebody who's using water, especially in San Juan, it's, you can't take a shower, you can't wash your dishes, you can't brush your teeth, it's tough. So you had an inch and a half or two-inch galvanized pipe in 1960s, and that has filled up with sediment. Today, you probably have a half-inch or quarter-inch pipe. So there's no pressure. Examples of failing roads, so when we're done with all the other improvements, the paving will be last. This is pretty normal. I was walking through the parks, I've been in the parks since about 7:00 AM this morning, and you literally have to watch where you walk, you walk into a pothole. It's, these are pretty representative of the entire park. Poor emergency access, especially at Cottonwood, there's no vertical access to this park at all. If you're in E or F Street, you have no ability to get to G, H, or I Street. So we're going to eliminate a couple pads and make those, permanently vacate those pads, and make those thoroughfares for emergency vehicles to get around the park and come at different pads from multiple directions. There's no fire hydrants within the parks. Code says that you have to have a fire hydrant within 600 feet of every structure. We're over 1,000 at some of the pads. I don't even know if you can run a fire line that far, I don't know. But in speaking with the fire chief, it's a maximum of 600. And they're dark, there's very little overhead lighting in these parks at all. A total of 58 abandoned trailers, houses, and apartments. Again, I retain the right to possibly rehabilitate one, in all honesty, I don't see that happening. Time-wise, I hope that I can bring an excavator in, have the asbestos removed, have title to all the trailers, and start tearing them out in late October of this year. Even though we're talking about two years here, I see this happening much more quickly than that. So this, again, this is pretty, this is not a cherry-picked photograph. This is pretty normal. And if you walk up to a lot of these, the stench is so bad, as I'm sure Chief Hall would tell you, when they have to go into these, I can't imagine going into these. I usually go to the front door, peek my head in, and leave. It's pretty rough. Next slide, please. As we talked about, or as Anne talked about, hazardous building materials. From all the testing we've done, we've done a phase one, we've done a phase two. Haven't come across a structure yet that we're tearing down that isn't loaded with asbestos. Five years ago, not as strict. Today, the state's air quality division is really, really serious about this. We will have our asbestos abatement team here pretty much throughout the demolition, measuring air quality, looking at the sites when the excavator's done. You can't, you can't leave a stick. These things need to be super clean. As Chief Hall talked about, the crime is bad. In Green Acres today was stopped by a resident who said she wasn't comfortable with her daughter walking down the street anymore because of a particular pad. I look over at that particular pad, and it's a party on a Tuesday at 2:00. There's some real problems over there. Next slide, please. Pretty typical, pretty typical for the site. Doors open, windows open. And in all honesty, the cellar boards them up, and every time I, I'll come back in two weeks, the boards are gone, the doors are open. I mean, there's just, there's no way to keep people out. Graffiti is really normal. That trash pile in the upper right-hand corner is Cottonwood, that's the kind of free-for-all dump in the back, and then of course, abandoned cars. Trees, the tree trimming is going to be substantial. The reality in today, looking up at a lot of the big trees, is a number of them are just dying. A lot of locust trees, some maples, they're just, for whatever reason, at the end of their life, and they're dying. So a number of them will be trimmed up. In talking to Dennis today, a huge branch fell down in San Juan. Luckily, it didn't hit anybody, but certainly nowhere I would park my car underneath these days. It's pretty common that big branches will fall. Community parks, spent a fair amount of time in both of these today. Weeds up to your knees, concrete sticking up in San Juan, not real safe environments for children to be playing, so these need to be completely rehabilitated. Exposed gas meters, so we're going to put in new bollards on all the gas meters. Again, emergency services, saving money between the fire department and Black Hills coming out and, you know, dealing with cars that hit. Gas meters, again, saving money, having that, avoiding that problem in the future by putting in bollards. The gas line in San Juan is steel. It's the original gas line, needs to be completely replaced, it's an accident waiting to happen. And then the other big problem is just the complaints from the community, not only the residents, but the neighbors and the city overall. So proposed improvements. Chief Hall brought this to my attention, and again, on the left is Cottonwood, and you'll see the three gold pads permanently vacated. And as I mentioned, between F and G Street, there is no access currently, so we would create two pass-throughs. And then between G and H Street, we would create one additional pass-through. So the emergency services can come in any particular pad from multiple directions. We'll also create additional off-street parking so that people do not park in the streets, and we will enforce the parking. And so when they have guests over, there will be, let me see, 104 parking spaces in San Juan, Green Acres, and 85 off-street parking spaces in Cottonwood. We will encourage tandem parking, so if there, if it is tight between units, we will allow two cars back-to-back, but completely off the street. And we will also enforce the parking, so especially on G Street in Cottonwood, it's really tight, and we have a lot of cars that they'll park, and the back of the car will hang over into the street. We are going to enforce that to where they'll be required to move their fences a little further in and get those cars completely off the street. Lighting, we're planning on adding 17 new overhead streetlights. Again, I've kept to my discretion on demolition, although as I mentioned, I think that's highly unlikely. And within two years... And within two years, I will begin to replace the mobile homes. Again, it says here, you know, hey, I've got two years to tear these out. That's two years of broken windows and headaches. There's no, there's no benefit for me at all to do that. You know, my plan is by end of November, we have no more vacant mobile homes in the Demolition or replace enough structures, you'll see the top part of that map in gold, those would be permanently vacated pads. So I'm proposing eliminating a total of 16 units in San Juan Green Acres and adding back in 12 new pads. And in Cottonwood, I'm proposing vacating three pads permanently and adding two new pads off E Street. As we mentioned, tiny homes certainly would be welcome. I'm completely open to it as long as they take the wheels off and put it on a permanent foundation. I think it just allows one more type of product that Montrose, you know, may need for, for housing. And it does create an affordable housing opportunity. Stable lot fees for two years. And to address your question on that, I'm fine with setting a date that would be consistent with when I actually issued the permit. So that would be after I get the civil plans completed, that's fine. I was talking to Chief Hall before the meeting that we will be working closely with law enforcement and the DEA and partnering with social services. Partnering with social services to me would be really making sure that a lot of people in the park who are on a fixed income, who are retired, you know, making sure that they're getting all the, all the governmental assistance, either local or federal that they can get. And, you know, walking around the parks today with Chris, the property manager who's here this evening, you know, there was, there were one or two or three pads I looked at where there probably should be a well check. There's some sad situations over there and some people that, you know, need to be looked after. Next slide, please. There's two stick-built homes that we'll rehabilitate. The top one's at 1601 Locust, right on Locust, and the bottom one is right next to the San Juan Park. Both of those will be rehabilitated and rented. As far as parks go, playgrounds I should say. Cottonwood, right along Locust, there's a fairly large park that'll be completely rehabilitated. New play structures, pavilions, landscaping, trees irrigated. We're likely going to double the size of the basketball court, so we have hoops at both ends, do a half soccer field, two pavilions. In Green Acres, we're going to create a new pocket park, which is where that arrow goes to. That's currently three abandoned trailers, a path through there to the San Juan Park so that it'll connect the communities better. And then the San Juan Park will be completely rehabilitated as well with pavilions, additional play equipment and landscaping and additional trees. These trees will all be removed. And then as far as the redevelopment expenses go, the initial pro forma eight months ago, nine months ago, was about 3.1 million. So we're roughly $1.4 million above where we initially thought we would be. And I appreciate the fact that you're open to discussing some assistance in that regard. As far as the investors sitting behind me, they're, they're open to taking a lesser return on their investment. I certainly am. As I mentioned to you in the last session, this is, this is, of course, it's a business venture for me. It's also, you know, a feel-good, doing the right thing venture for me and for my partners. And so, you know, it really provides me with a double benefit to do this. But that's where we currently are. The, the biggest problem with the, the cost at the moment is, you may all be aware, is not only is labor costs going up, but material costs have jumped substantially in the last five months. So we, we got a 15% contingency added to the major work, which is water, sewer, fire lines and asphalt. And that's even from our last meeting, you know, we, we bumped up quite a bit. So I certainly appreciate the consideration for a partial cost offset for the asbestos as well as for water, sewer, whatever you see fit. And of course, as Ann mentioned, none of that money would ever go through my accounts, that would be paid directly from the city or the federal government directly to the contractor who's performing the work. The team, you asked me this question last time, well, who, who's doing this, who's behind it? Mesa and Abel are both local contractors, Mesa Engineering and Randy Finner's doing the civil on it and Justin with Abel's doing the excavation. Those two will work hand in hand. Landmark Environmental is on the front range. I've worked with them for 25 years, they'll oversee earth services and abatement. And they'll probably be here in a hotel for about a month overseeing the, the overall work. My attorney Harmon was a city planner before he was an attorney. He's, he has a lot of real world experience as well as Brian with Caddis, who's also is a city planner. Local bank, Alpine Bank, Kai Hall's doing the loan. And then of course, Chris Dennis, who's here this evening with Monument Ridge and does all my management for properties on the Western Slope. As I think I mentioned, I, I tend to purchase C minus, D, D-level properties and bring them up to a B plus, A minus level property. It's always been my business model and it's, it's worked great for me and Chris has been a really important part of that overall business plan. Frankly, the, the other person that should probably be up here is the staff of the city because they've, they've done a ton. Between Ann and Amy and Scott and Stephen and Chief Hall, it's been, this would not have gotten to this point without any of them. City council shouldn't be very thankful for how much work they put into this. They've worked their tails off and Ann has been unbelievable and at times pulled me along as this has been a, this has been a very complicated jigsaw puzzle. So thank you for everyone involved and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question about the property management. So when this is said and done, is there a property manager on site or how does, I mean, that's a lot of, a lot of homes for people. Is there someone in Montrose they can talk to if they're having a problem with their lot?
Right now, the office in Cottonwood, which is the office for both parks, is open twice a week for about three hours. Chris, did you want to speak on that at all, discuss your plan on that? Is it okay if the gentleman comes up?
Yeah, absolutely. They just need to introduce themselves for the record.
Hi, I'm Chris Dennis from Monument Ridge. Yeah, we do plan on having someone in the office. Initially, it'll be slow, but as things pick up, we'll probably have someone here five days a week.
Okay. Any other questions, Ellen?
Mr. Mayor?
David, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, if I might. Pardon me for, for not being live and in person, but Mr. Dana, thank you very much for your presentation and I'm only more convinced that this is the right thing for the city to do after hearing the comments from staff and from you tonight. One question, you need to indicate it and I don't want to, I don't mean to put words in your mouth or suggest what you said, but at the work session on July 19th, my recollection is you indicated that with the rising costs going forward with this project was marginal or right on the edge, or those are words that I'm using, not your words, but it was, it was questionable in your mind. I, I guess my question is that having had the weeks since that period of time with increasing costs, but also with the, with the possibility of the city contributing more to your project, has that margin changed for you in the positive?
It has, it has. And I've, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm asking for concessions from the city, from the seller and then from my investors behind me. So I've basically asked everybody to pitch in. It's not just something where I'm anticipating the city would be the sole contributor to the increase in, in cost. The project does make sense. It is tighter than what I would normally like to do. It feels inappropriate to come to a city meeting and say, hey, give me this money or I walk. I mean, that's, that's not my intention, that was never my intention, so I hope it didn't come across that way.
Not at all.
Okay, I, I didn't mean it like that, so I hope, I hope you didn't interpret it like that. I'm just asking everybody to pitch in and, and, you know, and do the right thing. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, it, it does. And to put it in perspective, my question is really based on the fact that I think that you are making a very positive commitment to the community and something that I would like to see come to fruition. And I just want to make sure that with the city's assistance and everything else you're willing to forego, that this project will become a reality.
I think subject to me finalizing my, my financing with Kai, Kai on the 18th, yeah, yeah. I think that, I think if we get through this evening, the only thing standing in my way at this point is, is that, which Alpine Bank's very excited about the project. It's a local bank and they, they're, they see the community benefit as well as everybody else. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to point out to the public that at no point did Mr. Dana ever intimate or hint or even kind of put anywhere near the plate that he would walk if we didn't give him money. This is purely, I would say on the part of the city, this is a self-serving gesture because we looked at that when they came to the original work session and the original number they put out there that we have discussed in great detail, that we like to get rid of asbestos. We support that in the city, we want that to happen. But then when we started talking about it, looking at some of the other projects could be going on, this one has incredible value. And so that's why we, not Mr. Dana, proposed the increase in that amount.
Absolutely, and I would concur with you.
Communities across Colorado are having some of the same issues that we have with mobile home parks. And different communities in different cities are finding different solutions. There's one community where the residents themselves banded together and, and bought the mobile home park and are now all co-owners. And I think if I were to attend a conference with peer city councilors from across the state and I were to say, well, what if an investor just comes in, wants to buy all three and spend 4.3 million dollars making them better? They, they would laugh. They would say, that doesn't happen. And I, I think we're, we're lucky to actually be in this situation. We're not looking at the city buying these in order to make the necessary improvements for these, these folks. It's important that they have someplace to live that is safe, that has water pressure, that has sewage drainage, that can be accessed in case of a fire, where police can reach the units also. And I actually think this is a great partnership between the, the city and a private investor who's willing to come in and spend a lot of money in our community to make these improvements. I, I do, I am concerned that that two-year window be as far out as possible for the residents because I can imagine that the end result will be an increase in lot rents to them and to give them time to see that coming and understand that the improvements that are, they see happening, the street lighting and the trash going away, that they will be able to see the, the lot rent increase enough in the future that they can plan for it.
Anthony?
I'm, I concur. I mean, I think this project is in line too with what we've been talking about, which is affordable housing and finding ways to, more creative ways to try to attract investors and to incentivize investors to make a difference in our community, so.
Other questions?
Thank you very much for taking your time and go through this. I think it'd be very helpful to the community and to the folks here at the meeting this evening.
Well, thanks for your consideration.
All right. Next thing we'll do is we will take comments from the public on this item. If you'd be kind enough to raise your hand, I'll start on the far left and we'll work across left to right. Yes, ma'am? Please come forward and state your name and your address for our record. And we have these cute little lights up front, you're allowed three minutes.
Okay, I don't need three minutes. I'm Kathy Johnson, I live at 1705 Locust. I'm across Mesa Vista from Cottonwood. It's a very mixed neighborhood, there's a subdivision, a lot of open fields, old houses, commercial Arby's and the backs of a lot of motels. And then there's Cottonwood. And it's the sore spot of the area. And I am just tickled pink and hugely grateful, and I think I speak for a whole lot of people in the area, for Rich to come along and do this and to be the kind of person who wants to do the right thing for a whole lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Yes, sir, please come up. State your name and your address for the record.
My name is Dennis Allerid. Now, I am a resident, 23-year resident of San Juan Mobile Home Park. 221 South San Juan, number 13. Now, I have the opportunity, it's been a great place to live. The infrastructure, I call this a forgotten community, first by the city and the owners. Now, we're in the middle of a conflict we call the city for, you know, like the trees and they, in the catch 22, they cannot help because it's a private property. So now we have the opportunity to really get involved and the local residents feel the same as me, that we're looking forward to this project. We think that this forgotten community will be certainly an asset. And an urban area in Montrose, we don't have to move out of the city. And we're happy to see Mr. Dana come and help us out. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Sure, my name is Abby Brewer, I'm with Housing Resources of Western Colorado. We're at 460 North Townsend here in Montrose. And I just want to say thank you to the city and to the possible new owner. This is amazing. We talk about the need for affordable housing every single day in this community and what the major need is. Homelessness is on the rise, we need more affordable housing. I've been working with the residents over at San Juan probably for the last two years just around their rights as residents. So I think that this project is a win-win-win. And again, thanks for, to Ann, I really think that she really listened to the community and what their needs were. So just thank you for, for really putting the citizens first.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? All right, then I will bring it back up here. Council, any other questions?
No, any questions, but I think I'd like to open the discussion concerning the amount of the compensation. And what staff has proposed of the 200,000 from the city and 300,000 from the American Rescue Fund funding, to me makes good sense. I think it's a good balance. It's a little bit less on our side, but we're able luckily to make that up with the American Rescue Act funding. And I think those numbers, I would like to support those.
Then I'm going to make the motion.
All right.
To approve financial contribution to the rehabilitation of Cottonwood, San Juan and Green Acres mobile home parks in the amount of 500,000. Such financial contributions will be paid directly to contractors for completed work components such as the removal of uninhabitable mobile homes, the removal of asbestos and the installation of new water and service lines. Funding shall be allocated 200,000 from general fund reserves and 300,000 from American Rescue Plan funding.
I'll proudly second that. All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll need a voice vote on this.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you very much, that passes. Now we'll go on to the second item under this consideration, make a motion for the mobile home park.
I'll take the burden off by letting everybody read one. Mr. Mayor, I can make a motion to approve the mobile home park permit request for Cottonwood Mobile Home Park as detailed in this staff report. With the mobile home park permit conditions number one through three as detailed in the staff report and with the associated variance approvals, the request meets the code criteria and standards based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
I'll have, second that motion. Have a motion and a second. Would you please take a voice?
Doug Glassbell?
Yes. Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And the next item is for the San Juan.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the mobile home park permit request for San Juan Mobile Home Park as detailed in the staff report with the mobile home park permit conditions one through three as detailed in the staff report and the associated variances approval, the variance approvals. The request meets the code criteria and standards based on the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing and in the staff report.
I'll second that. And we'll go with a voice vote.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And we have one more item.
I'd be happy to do, I was going to give J. David a turn if he wanted to, but it's really hard when you're remote. I will move that we approve the mobile home park permit request for Green Acres Mobile Home Park as detailed in this staff report with the mobile home park permit conditions numbers one through three as detailed in the staff report and with the associated variance approvals. The request meets the code criteria and standards based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll have a voice vote.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. I want to thank the staff and the residents that came out this evening and certainly the developer. I think this is going to be an excellent opportunity to improve our community greatly, and we appreciate that.
I think a lot of our audience might be here for this issue, and while, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, it's all very exciting. You can also get up and leave, that's okay too.
Of course, it's a $5 charge for leaving early, but. Okay, the next item on our list this evening is number eight, the Public Safety Complex Construction Contract Amendment. This will be presented by Public Works. Nice tie.
Thank you, sir.
No hat and a necktie? This is worth it right here.
That's right. So I'll start us off and start to discuss this again with the same discussion we had in work session. Nothing has changed since then, but we'll recap. I'll start off with Ty Withy from Shaw Construction will come and speak to you, and then I'll be back at the end. So I'll start off with Ty.
And Ty, if you would, give us your name and address.
Ty Withy, 61648 Grand View Court, Montrose, Colorado. So basically, we all kind of know, we've been hearing about the kind of unprecedented market and the, the construction materials, labor, everything that's going on within the market. We're seeing, you know, it's, it's really hard to keep track of some of these costs. We've done, on this project, what we've tried to do is really keep track of the best we can. One of the things that we've done is released some things with your guys' approval, which we thank on a, on an early, you know, some steel, some screw piles, things like that that helped save some money on this project and helped this thing move forward pretty well. But the price escalations have just continued to rise since the first of the year. That has been really hard to keep track of and, and control. So just to give you an idea, I'm here to represent Shaw, but the, we have three offices, Denver, Grand Junction, Salt Lake City, and we're seeing on projects an increase of, you know, upwards of 14% on projects that we priced in the fall to now. And what we, for this project, from design development, we have a couple of different packages that we go through, schematic design, design development, and the 100% construction documents that we're at at this point. The last time you guys approved the, the value was at a design development. And we've seen about a, about a 8% increase. We've been able to kind of keep it to 8%, so which is a good thing, but the simple fact is the prices have kind of gone up and, and been hard to control just due to the market's instability and volatility. So just a couple of examples, you know, roofing insulation went from a lead time to get from, you know, four weeks to six months now. You know, paint is a shortage, insulation is a shortage. You've all heard about the lumber, you know, that's gone crazy over the last few, although that's down a little bit, it's still, you know, 40, 50% higher than it was when some of these prices were put together. So just, just an example of some of the things that, that have caused some, some issues. Also, you know, with every construction project, we run into some, you know, the site conditions. And on this one, we had some unsuitable soils that we ran into that resulted in spending some, some funds that weren't necessarily, we, we were hoping we didn't have to do, but unfortunately we had to just to make sure that the building is built with a quality and, and safety in mind for long-term 50-year buildings. So, you know, one of the things we try to do, and we've worked really well with the Blythe Group, who's the architect, and, and the whole team, with Jim's group and Chief, is just trying to, you know, where, where are some areas where we can maybe look at some alternatives and find some, you know, value savings in this project? And we've done a lot of that. I mean, I think throughout the course of this project, we've, we've valued out, or not valued out, but found value savings in, in the project of over $1 million. And we're at the point right now where it's kind of, you know, we don't have a whole lot of things to look at anymore. And so we've, if we go through that VE process again, which we are going to do with very specific items, but there is a chance of a diminishing of returns when you go through that process because you have, that process takes some time, and during that same time that we find a, a better value, that the, the price may have changed. And so now you're getting something that may not be as good of quality, but the first same value that we could have bought it originally. So one thing that we've committed to do is kind of go through this process and look at what we do have left in terms of some finishes and treat it on a case-by-case basis and, and really walk through with the, with the chief and his group and Blythe and just find out, you know, is there a price increase coming? If there is, maybe we need to make a decision quicker, but if there's not, maybe we have some time to maybe find a little bit more savings. I know that Peter from Blythe Group's here to talk about part of the design, some of the things we've taken on the design side to help save some money. But again, the unfortunate thing is we're just living in a volatile market right now that's causing the prices to go up quite, quite significantly that, you know, people that I've talked to within this industry that have done it for 40, 50 years say they've never seen this type of volatility, so.
One of the things we mentioned in work session was when Chief Hall presented to us the original request, that a sheet of plywood at that time was $9.50. When we talked, by the time he made the presentation, it was $14. I looked at the price yesterday at work session, it's $32.50 for a 17/16 sheet of OSB. So you look at those price increases, that this is obviously nothing that we could have foreseen or controlled.
Correct. Any more questions from me before I let Peter?
Counselor Reed, if something comes along here, don't hesitate to speak right up if we miss you.
Peter, I spoke with BG and Co., Blythe Group, out of Grand Junction. Our address is 622 Rude Avenue, Unit A, Grand Junction. So like Ty said, we, I'm really glad we're not building this out of OSB for multiple reasons, but the cost being one of them. But as Ty said, we, we have spent a lot of, this is my assistant Shannon Power, so she's with our office too, so she, she gets to hold all the nice looking stuff.
You're saying her, her new nickname is Easel.
Right. She does, she does pretty well at that, I guess, but, and lots of other things. But as Ty mentioned, as a team, we've really approached this, this, this cost issue hard, tried to hit it hard with what, what we call the budget status log with, with line items of, of potential reductions, ways to save money on the project. And that, that list throughout the, you know, from that design development phase when we last spoke to you all to now, has had nearly 100 items on it, 100 line items of various things. Some, some we've rejected because we thought, you know, that, that is not, we don't want to go that far. We don't want to, don't want to do that, but because it would have reduced too much usability or efficiency from the project. But a lot of them we have accepted and, and it's amounted in substantial savings to the project. That's not a unique process to this project. We do, we go through it on almost every public project we, we work on for design, but it certainly has been more intense on this one due to the, the market. I'll just give you one example, quick example of that. Early on, we, we did everything we could to reduce square footage from the building because that's one of the biggest impacts you can have on the overall cost is reducing the size of what you're building. And so we, we went through an exercise of taking the floor plan and the design and trying to make it more efficient, line some things up and, and update the design that way to, to make it as efficient as we could. And we, and we've done, we've done as much of that as we can. We, like, like Ty mentioned, I would also agree. We don't feel like there's much else that we can cut at this point without really affecting the durability, the maintainability, or the efficiency or usability of the, the facility. You know, all the, the more recent things on the BSL have been a lot of small items like, well, let's take tile out of this spot or tile out of that spot and, and just leave it as bare concrete or, or that kind of change. I mean, every little bit helps, I guess, but it's, it's getting down to the, the nuts and bolts that way. The other thing that I would, I would mention tonight that we're, we're here to, to talk about as part of this request are the, a couple of alternates that we have in the project. That's another way that we try to, try to control, help control costs on buildings is identify items that can be in, as part of the design as an alternate, something that is not part of the contract value, but if the money is available in the contingency or, or some other way to get, get that added to the project later, we can do that. And so a couple of these that we've identified here, the first one I'll mention is the, the secure parking lot where all the police vehicles will be as south of the building. That's the bottom image here. One of the things that we'd really like to put in there are some canopies to cover the, the police vehicles. These, these vehicles have a lot of equipment in them, a lot of money invested in these vehicles, and, and being able to park them in the shade really lengthens the, the time that that equipment is, is usable. It, it's a lot of wear and tear if they're parked in the, in the hot sun, as we all have gotten into our own cars and understand what that's like. But the, the other, the, the tops of those canopies are, are set up, would be set up to have solar panels, photovoltaic panels to produce electricity on, on top of them. We're, we're actually not, not recommending that this be added right now because it, it's an easy thing to add in the future. There's nothing that, once the building is finished and occupied, you could still go back and add these. We've included conduit, in other words, the infrastructure, a rough-in is there, so this could be installed in the future and, and used. This, these two, two top images are represented in alternate for what we're calling planter walls or seat walls around the, the west and, and north sides of the building. In the middle image here is, this shows what, what the front of the building would look like without these, have planted, planted areas in front of the building. The alternate being to add masonry walls around these planted areas, so it, it creates a raised planter bed. The, the purpose of these will be twofold. The big one is security. It helps keep vehicles further away from the building, helps prevent people from walking up to windows that, that are on the first floor of the building. And then the second being aesthetics, you know, that, that really is, is a civic type of feature on a building. And, and we're downtown, we're across the street from City Hall that has this type of feature as well, and, and it just really is a, we think a big benefit to the project and to the downtown feel of this, this area, the civic feel of this downtown area. That's, I guess that's about, about all I would, all I have to, to add to the conversation. Any, any questions you have for, for us?
Thank you for that, and thank you for being available yesterday morning for all the questions we did have. I think we had a good discussion about this. At our work session.
Yeah, I think, I think it's good to point out that we have, this is not the first time that we've been through all this, and we've had a very good update on it. We do appreciate that.
And also that the, the recording of the work session is available, so if somebody wants to be a little bit more involved and hear a little bit more about, a more in-depth discussion about what we thought about these things, that's certainly available for you to hear.
Okay. I think we, just as a point of reference, we did discuss in the work session was the, the canopies being like way at the top of contingencies and, and we would add that in.
Yeah, if, if.
If the funding was there, that was one of the first things to.
Exactly. That's, that's, that's high on the list. That's why we're, we're talking about it today is this is something that, that's wanted by everybody involved, but we, we have to make decisions somewhere, and so that's, that's where it sits.
And that we're comfortable holding off on that for now to see how the budget pans out and see how much contingency money is available. However, meanwhile, because the cost of doing it now is, is relevant to the total cost, I really liked the seat walls, and I think my fellow counselors said similar things at our work session yesterday.
I think we discussed that in great detail, that we wanted to not only make this building very useful and utilitarian, but also aesthetically pleasing and that would blend with our, our little civic plaza. And the security, the aspect had a great deal of value to us, so that we felt a great deal of consensus, I think, that those be included in our construction.
Absolutely agreed. And, and the one thing I didn't mention, the seat walls would be very difficult to add later, which again is another reason why it's higher on the priority list than the canopies at this point.
Counselor Reed, do you have any comments?
Not, only, only that I think we had a very detailed discussion yesterday in work session, and I'm very convinced that the need is there to, to move forward with this.
All right, thank you.
All right. With that, I'll, I'll let Riley O'Brien come up and finish with a few comments, and then I think you'll get Jim again.
All right.
I, I should have worn a tie too, but I.
If you would, state your name and address, too.
Riley O'Brien, Dynamic Program Management, 1202 Pitkin Avenue, Glenwood Springs, Colorado. Yeah, just to touch on a couple extra things on Ty's comments about the pricing benefits of releasing the steel package at DD's. The other benefit of that was that if we had waited to 100% construction documents to procure the steel, we would be in a situation where we wouldn't be able to get the steel in time to maintain the project schedule, so by being proactive, able to maintain the project schedule and keep the project moving forward. Continuing on Peter's comments about using contingency to approve ad alternates and having that, with some flexibility in the overall project scope, as project risks go down and we put those, those risks behind us, we'll be in a position where we could use those potential contingency savings to, to purchase those ad alternates like the canopies or the solar on those canopies. We just achieved a significant milestone where we're out of the ground for the building foundation footprint. That was a substantial project risk, although there were some costs associated with getting out of the poor soils on the site, and we still have some risk with the soils for the secure parking to the south of the site. One last thing that we didn't touch on yesterday, I just want to say that the team, Shaw, Blythe, the PD and the city have all been working really collaboratively on this process, and I think a testament to the team that we've been able to hold the budget as, as best we can and maintain the project schedule and continue moving forward, and really appreciate your support of this project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. So I have a couple things I wanted to clarify in the recommendation, but first, I guess I wanted to thank you for being supportive of this process and understanding of us coming early on in that the DD level with a request there for funding of the, the overall project funding at that time. And we were estimating, that was a DD estimate then, and now we are at what we call a GMP level, which is the, where we're ready to sign our final contract with Shaw. And those are the documents that I included in the packet to help explain that process, but you all allowing us the approval of the funding at the DD levels what allowed us to start the construction. us to start the construction, um, in March of this year. And had we waited like Riley mentioned till 100% CDs, uh, we would just now be starting construction and trying to procure things like steel, which would have been much more difficult than the process we went through. So there were price increases and that's why we're here today, um, uh, for the most part, but, um, they would have been much worse if we hadn't started that process, um, in February of this year.
Jim, could you explain what GMP means to the public?
Yeah, it's the Guaranteed Maximum Price. So, um, now that, um, documents are completed, can, the design documents, um, and Shaw has been able to bid out every, um, portion of those documents, we have hard bids on every piece of it and can now compile a complete budget. Uh, where at the DD level, um, we, it was all estimates. So we had a lot of subcontractors and a, a lot of consultants, um, giving us bids, but they were not based on final construction documents. So, um, it was an estimate at that point. And there were contingencies to allow for that. Um, we knew that the design wasn't 100% complete, so we included contingencies to allow for some fluctuation. Um, but what we didn't foresee was the large fluctuation in price in the market that, um, that happened in these last six months. Um, and that's, that's where, uh, the price went far beyond what our contingency was included for that escalation. Um, and so in this recommendation, we're, um, we're asking for you to authorize an additional 1.8 million or $1,830,805. And that is shown in the, um, Shaw GMP document that is included in the packet. Um, at the top it says the GMP combined 726 of 21. And the total Shaw contract would increase to 16,595,215. And that's about 1.2 million above what it was, uh, when we requested that amount in February. Which brings the grand total, including owner's contingency, to 18,43,689. And that's about 600,000 higher than it was, um, in February when requested at that time. And so that brings us to the total increase, um, for the overall hard costs associated with the project and the funding we're requesting to be approved, um, 1.8 million above, uh, what it was in February. If that, did I clarify a little bit of how we broke that down? And the GMP document and the original DD estimate are both in the packet for comparison purposes. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Yeah, perfect. Um, thank you, Jim. I appreciate all your hard work on this. Uh, you know, and I think it's just two points of clarity, just so everyone, uh, realizes that, that the seat walls and planters were included at 68,975.
Yes, sir.
In that budget, um, of the 1.8.
That's right. So within that, um, Shaw contract amount of the GMP document, we did include, um, these seat walls on the planters. Um, that was an ad alternate. Um, it was not included in the DD estimate previously. So that was something that we accepted as an ad alternate into their contract at, at this time. We, uh, like they, like they had explained, it's very difficult to add later and we feel it's very important to the project, um, one for safety, um, primarily, but also, uh, for connectivity with other facilities downtown. So yes, it, it wasn't, or is included in that GMP.
Thank you. And I think the other point was, uh, yesterday we brought up, which was a concern was with the percentage and Barbara brought that up as a, you know, was going, it was a 3% of the total was going to Shaw, but when you break it all down, it only comes out to about $40,000 additional funding to Shaw for, uh, going directly to them for payment.
That's true, yes.
David Reed, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
City Manager, Mr. Bill, do you have any input you want to give?
I don't, uh, other than just saying that the team's working really well. Uh, we've established a really good, hardworking team and I, you can't really, um, describe how many hours they've put into trying to value engineer the project before bringing this to council. The last thing Jim and the whole team wanted to do was come before city council and ask for an increased budget on the project. And so it was only after careful deliberation and a lot of man-hours, uh, did we force them to do this. So, uh, it was, it's, should be our last estimate on the project. And if not, we will find a new place for Blaine to have his office or eliminate some of the amenities like his shower, uh, personal bathing facility, extra couches, the things that he's been asking for. But Jim's doing a good job.
Don't start rumors. There is none of that in this building.
Oh, are we on a public meeting? I'm sorry about that. Sorry, Chief Hall. Uh, no, we have just, I can't be more proud of the team.
Didn't even see the bus coming.
You don't hear from me a lot because these guys are doing such great work. They just keep me posted. I'm not involved in the day-to-day meetings. I meet for about an hour, uh, over lunch, once a week to get caught up. Uh, but please know they're more than willing to share information with all of you as council members and any citizen who wants to know about the project, they get really passionate about it and they will talk your ear off about all of these things, uh, to a very high level of detail. So just want to say thank you to the group and for council's, uh, consideration of this request.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? We'll take public comment on this particular item if you'd care to come forward. I see none. All right, in that case, I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve $1,830,805 amendment to the authorized funding to be used toward the construction of the Montrose Public Safety Complex as presented.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. We'll take a voice vote.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have unanimous vote.
Thank you. We'll go on to the next item.
Ty worked.
Is that a rental or do you?
I own it now.
I own it now.
We'll take a moment here, allow the folks to. The next item on our agenda is item nine, Resolution 2021-12. And this is being presented by Chief Blaine.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilors. Tonight I come before you considering a, uh, authorizing a resolution, uh, for the Montrose Police Department to file for and accept a VALE grant, which is a Victims Assistant Law Enforcement Board Grant through the Seventh Judicial District Victims Assistance Board for a total of $28,000. And this, uh, grant would be used specifically to fund half of our Victims Advocate that we employ here at the, uh, Montrose Police Department. Just a little bit of a background, our Victims Advocate is a statutorily required position. So all law enforcement agencies in the state of Colorado are required to, uh, to fund and to employ a Victims Advocate for, uh, victim services in our case in the city of Montrose. And so I come before you tonight to, uh, ask for that authorization to apply for and accept that $28,000 through that, uh, grant.
I would point out, uh, that money comes out of Seventh Judicial District and any of you that have had a traffic violation and had to pay out there, why you're helping with, uh, the funding for this in, income that the Seventh Judicial uses. So, um, uh, Blaine and I have been on the board of that before and it's an extremely helpful to all of the police departments within the Seventh Judicial District. So I highly recommend it myself. I would take any public, uh, comments if anybody would like to speak. All right, in that case, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2021-12 as presented.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second. We'll have a voice.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed? Mr. Reed?
David Reed.
We might have lost him. Now we lost him. We just kicked him out.
Just a moment while we try to get reconnected with him.
Okay. And Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have four votes in favor.
All right, then we will accept that and know that we're trying to catch David. We'll catch him the next time around. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Ordinance 2548 in second reading. Uh, it's consideration of, uh, Ordinance 2548 and Amy Sharp will be presenting this information.
Thank you very much, City Council. If, um, someone could promote me on Zoom as a panelist so I can share my screen, that would be helpful. Thanks. But I'll go ahead and, there they are already. They are fast. All right, so as you mentioned, this is the second reading for the Orchard Road Right-A-Way Vacation. You guys have heard this a couple of times, so I'll kind of breeze through it and, and available to answer any questions as well. Um, this proposed vacation is located along Orchard Road in the Waterfall Canyon subdivision and it includes approximately 1.7 acres. Um, this is being done as part of the proposed Waterfall Canyon, um, subdivision final plat, which actually is next on the agenda. So this is actually needed in order for that final plat to occur as well. Um, once this is vacated, the extreme western portion is going to be included in a new Orchard Drive as well as an open space tract. And then the center portion is going to become part of the city park that's going to be located here in Waterfall Canyon. And then the eastern portion will actually be included in two small HOA managed open space tracts that total about 0.22 acres. Um, the original Waterfall Canyon preliminary plat was renewed in 2012 and again in 2017. Um, and as I mentioned, they are coming to, before you tonight with the final plat for the Waterfall Canyon filing number five, which will, um, incorporate this Orchard Road Right-A-Way Vacation. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions on this one? All right, I would accept any public comments. I see none. Do we have one? Yes, I'm sorry. Could, uh, state your name and your address for us?
Okay, I'm back on.
Thank you, David.
My name is Susan Kroll. My address is 1403 Blue Lake Drive in the Waterfall Canyon subdivision. And as a resident there, I do have some concerns about the city giving over control of Orchard Road moving through that area. We have very limited, uh, access and egress from our subdivision. We have quite a few houses there, over 110 houses occupied. They just recently finished construction of six more. They are already occupied within like three days of the completion. And we have very limited ways to get in and out of that subdivision in an emergency situation. We have talked to the fire department about this. They say that they are within, uh, regulations, shall we say, of what they need to have for, uh, entry and egress from that area, but the residents are not satisfied with that. We have everybody downloading onto Blue Lake Drive and out to 6375 Road. Then they can leave through another subdivision, which if there's a need to be evacuating in that area, they also will be leaving. And we would like to, I personally and several of us I have talked to, would like to see Orchard Road not dedicated as a footpath, but actually be cut through to 6375 Road to give another way to give access to the subdivision for development going to the south and a means for us to leave the subdivision if it became necessary for any emergency situation. Also, we have had some problems with, um, all the traffic that's coming, it's overburdening Blue Lake, and I'm not saying this just because I live there, but I've had firsthand view of it, that, uh, everything comes in and out on Blue Lake or a temporary road, which is like a temporary extension of 6375 Road. I don't know if the city intends to pave that ultimately, but we still need a way in and out for the people who are going into the development to the south of the existing subdivision. We had an emergency situation where a fire truck and ambulance attempted to come in and render service to a new person, new resident on Pilot Knob, which is, draws off to the south from Blue Lake. And there's not even a street sign there to give the emergency personnel any idea where to go when they had to ask a resident, "Where's Pilot Knob?" So we think that some of these developments are perhaps moving without adequate consideration for the safety and welfare and peace of mind of the people who live in the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? All right, in that case, uh, we'll move forward with it. Uh, staff, do you have any additional questions or counsel?
Well, I just wondered if staff had any, it, it, provide any additional information to council regarding some of those issues and concerns.
Sure, I'll just note, um, and it's in your packet too, the entire road is not being vacated. So as part of this next project, the Waterfall Canyon final plat, you'll see that it's being rededicated, the western portion back, um, as, and it's going to be widened and to include a new Orchard Drive. And then as we've noted, you know, the center portion is going to be that new city park as well. And then, um, if there's discussion about, you know, future connections and roads, that would be part of our larger transportation plan and, um, larger development concerns regarding Waterfall Canyon as a whole, not just this Orchard Road portion. So, um, it's not, um, you know, in my opinion, cutting off any current access that exists. And then we have, we have the, um, Delmont is here as well, representing the clients. If you have any future questions for them, they could certainly, you know, be available as well.
So will there still be connectivity across through that area once that rededication occurs?
Um, yeah, you'll be able to see that on the Waterfall Canyon. I hate to jump ahead to that one too much, you know, on that plat, but.
I'm, I'm just trying to address the, the lady's concern that.
Sure.
There is connectivity still going to be established through that area.
Well, the eastern portion in this one is actually going to be part of two small HOA managed open space tracts. So when this gets rededicated, those are actually going to be open space areas.
Thank you.
As we have, are seeing a lot of development in the city limits, what is the process for getting street signs made with a new name and put on the street as soon as possible? And I would ask Scott or Jim, but they are not here anymore. So does any, I mean, could they maybe give us a little presentation about that at an upcoming work session?
Yeah, we usually, it's put in at the time the dedication takes place and the road's built and then it doesn't take very long to put signage up there. I haven't heard that this was an issue, but as far as naming streets and those types of things, there's a process where they contact the public works manager. Public Works Manager meets with us on our land use committee. We talk through those issues and then Public Works is usually really quick about getting signage up. We make a lot of our own signs in-house, uh, as far as street signs, uh, and so we'll, we'll address that.
Oh, let's just double check that one.
Any other questions, Council? Any questions for the engineering firm? All right, in that case, I would accept a motion.
I'd move to adopt Ordinance 2548 on second reading as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Let's have a voice call.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you very much. That passes. We'll go to item 11, which is Waterfall Canyon subdivision filing number five, final plat. And Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council. Thank you again, Mayor and City Council.
Excuse me, pardon hearing, could you talk a little slower?
Absolutely. This is not showing up on the screen very well. I'm going to stop and reshare. I don't know why it's doing that. Let me restart though. It is strange. Council, while we have a pause, do you mind if I just confirm, was that street sign missing on Pilot Knob? Was that it? Okay. Pilot Knob and, and Blue Lake. Okay, thank you. Thank you. We'll look into it. All right, thanks for bearing with me. I think this is not so weird looking now, and you can actually see the whole screen. So this project is the Waterfall Canyon subdivision filing number five, final plat. This project is located just south of Spring Creek Road and north of Oak Grove Road. I think most of you are familiar with Waterfall Canyon, but it includes this portion that's south of what's already developed there. This plat is proposing to create 35 new residential lots and also dedicate some right-of-way and easements. It includes 127 acres, so you'll see on the actual final plat map that it dedicates 35 residential lots, some easements and right-of-ways, as I mentioned, and then there's also an outlot. So they are still including a large area that's kind of to the west and the north that remains as an outlot, and that would be developed later in time. This area is currently zoned as R3 and R3A, so the proposed development is in line with how it is currently zoned. And the preliminary plat was approved back in November of 2017, and according to our code, a final plat has to be approved within five years, or they have to go back and do their preliminary plat again. So they do meet those requirements. These are the requirements that a final plat must meet, and these are the things that we review for to ensure that it meets all these requirements before bringing them before you. All of the lots have to meet the minimum lot size requirements. All of the surrounding streets must be in place and approved by the city engineer, which he has reviewed these, and all the utilities must also be installed. This is the first page of the final plat. This is just basically all the plat notes and the certificates of who has to sign the final plat. And then this shows you the actual lots that are being created as part of this final plat. So there's 10 lots on Howard Fork Avenue in Block 10. There's another 10 lots on Block 11 in Howard Fork Avenue. 10 lots on Block 11 of Pilot Knob Avenue, and then five lots on Block 23 of Pilot Knob Avenue. And then there's still, as I mentioned, a few tracts that are being dedicated as this as well, so those are in your packet. This is kind of an overview of the map, so it shows the last one was a detail of just the residential lots, and then this is a big picture view of the whole entire parcel that's being done as part of this final plat. The areas I mentioned that, you know, doesn't show individual lots, that remains as an outlot for future development later in time. Staff analysis, we just would like the standard condition applied to this that we put on all final plats, and I'll read through that. The approval of this final plat is expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant, applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied. With that, I'll open it up to any questions, and again, Delmont, the engineer for this development, is here as well, if you have any questions for them.
Yeah, I do have a question for Steve. Fuller Lake Drive and Ice Lake Drive, are they planned in the long term to connect over to the west?
Steve, if you would, state your name and address.
Steve Stevenson, Delmont Consultants, 125 Colorado Avenue. Yes, Mr. Frank, those do continue to the west, and they basically form the border around the future city park. And then they terminate to the west on Alta Lakes Avenue. So it would form a, basically a big rectangle with the lake and the park in the center of it, and I understand that Jackie Boobnuk?
Boobnuk.
Is currently designing that park for the city.
The reason I ask that is because that does address the question of connectivity in the long term, that the Ice Lake Drive and Fuller Lake will, will continue all the way over to the west to connect with...
Alta Lakes to the west.
So there will be connectivity in the long term.
There will be internal, the external connectivity. Yes, external connectivity, there are four designed points of exit from the subdivision. Two depend on future development to the north and the south. Both of those are on that Alta Lakes road that you were just referencing. The other two, one is built, that's Blue Lakes currently, and the last is Lake Hope Drive, which is directly to the south of this filing. And that is already constructed to be an emergency exit right now. Mark Bray specifically requested that in the review. So there's an all-weather road. It's an extension of 6375, which is on the eastern boundary, and then it would turn into that future Lake Hope Drive, which would then connect to those paved streets that are currently built. The Howard Fork and Pilot Knob currently are connected with a T-post and ribbon fence to encourage the traffic if there's an emergency need internal to the neighborhood to take that route. If they needed to get out, the fire department could take the T-post down and the ribbons. Someone could drive through them for that matter, they're not that stout. And then on 6375, you could get to Oak Grove to the south or back to Highway 90 to the north. So it's, it's not ideal yet, but it's, it's in place right now, and as future phases develop, those roads will be paved.
Thank you. Any other questions for Steve?
Some of these roads are so new, they're not even showing up on the assessor's website. I mean, these are fairly, like Pilots, Knob.
Pilot, Pilot Knob has, the original phase of the subdivision had it, so it should be on the maps.
Okay.
Howard Fork is one of the original roads. The two newest roads have no residences on those. Those are Ice Lake and Fuller Lake. So there'll be no addresses on those. Those were included in this filing just to, to extend the water service and the sewer service over to the west. And it made sense with those utilities in the ground and nothing else happening there, to go ahead and pave those and sort of whet the appetite for that park coming as well.
That's because I'm stuck on a 2018 area. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Thank you for that information. You're always here, and you always sit through our city council meetings, and you never get called on. Tonight was your big moment.
I believe we have one other person that had, would like to speak. Could you come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and address?
My name is Linda Boroff, and I live at 1411 Blue Lake Drive. And he was discussing this park, public park, that's going to be obviously a place where there'll be a number of people driving cars down. Is there a plan for a parking lot? And a way in and out of that public area?
I think that's probably something that our Parks Director, who's working on that, could give us an update on it at a later date. I mean, does it, does staff know yet, or is Jackie still working on that design?
Jackie's still working through that, but right now it would be a very rough, more natural park. So the idea is to put a walking trail and a couple benches and that type of thing to start out. And so, from what I've heard so far, there wouldn't be a huge need, as if we were putting in a large playground facility, that might be more of a destination.
So this is a park for the residents there?
Correct. Yeah, on that side of Sunset Mesa, we just, we have quite a bit of density as far as population, but we don't have a lot of park amenities. And so this has been on the books for quite a while, and with Jackie and his landscape architect abilities and having him in-house and meeting with Matt Miles on his project, it seemed like the right time to get something into the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you have a question? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Wanda Tocovic, and I live at 519 Vermillion Avenue. My question is on this park, and is this totally going to be maintained by the city? And the reason I question that is if, if it's not, that's a lot of liability for the homeowners that live in Waterfall Canyon, insurance liability, and that's why I wanted to make sure that this is part of the city that's going to take care of that.
Yes, part of the, part of the plan, because the city's doing the work on it.
So it's going to be all three lakes?
It will be a city park, and if it's a city park, it will be maintained by the city.
And it's going to be all, all three of the big lakes?
I don't believe so, but...
This is still kind of in the design phases. I'm not sure we could really answer that.
Okay.
But as, as it develops, yeah, we, we're not really sure. We haven't seen the design, so... But as that comes forward, you can certainly contact our Public Works, and they'll be more than happy to kind of keep you updated on what's going on with that. And I'm sure it'll be brought to us at some point in either a work session or one of our sessions to look at that as well.
Okay, that was my questions on that, of, you know, the cost to the homeowners there. Yeah, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd step up the microphone and state your name and address? State your name and address.
Yeah, it's Erwin Boroff. That was my wife earlier. I live in the same place. I have walked around the development, and the, the map sheet showed has shows a couple of small lakes. They're not small at all. They're much bigger than depicted in this. The one in back, well, the one in front is about twice the size as this. The one in back is like a half a football field. It's huge, very deep. And I'm wondering, and if, if the plans are aware of the size of all of these lakes, and will they be part of a park? And I'm concerned, we have a lot of families moving into Waterfall Canyon. I'm a retired attorney. I practiced for 50 years, mostly in California. And I'm familiar with the term of attractive nuisance. And that means that little kids will run and jump in the water and drown. It's pretty rare, but it's, when it happens, it's, it's a situation, the probability is rare, the result is astronomical if a kid drowns. And so I'm wondering if all of these factors of the safety, is there a part concern with these very large, two very large lakes? Is there going to be houses nearby? Is there parking? How does all this fit into the overall plan with these lakes there being that large and far larger than this plan would have contemplated?
Bill, would you like to make a comment on it?
Yeah, I think we're getting a lot of questions, so we don't want to give inaccurate information without a chance to check into it, but from... I just wanted to say that we haven't had a chance to really think about the questions that are coming up, so I don't want to give any inaccurate information. But Amy's told us just here quickly that the park and the pond is one thing, and that's what the city would be taking ownership over and maintaining?
These are ponds.
Correct. These are HOA detention ponds, most likely. They're, they're managed by the HOA, what you're referring to. So that's an HOA issue, and the city doesn't maintain those or manage those at all. It's an HOA function. And so we would, we can talk offline about that further if you have more questions on that, but we'd want to sit down with all of the paperwork or go on a site visit and look at it. But those areas you're talking about are not included in our park that we're talking about. It's two different areas.
Big lakes, you know, ponds, you know, if anything besides having a football field and, and buried deep are not going to be part of, the city's not going to take them over?
No.
And could be the HOA that's going to have to carry insurance, uh, deal with kids?
They are, they are already an HOA responsibility, and the city does not take over HOA responsibilities, because that would put the liability onto the taxpayer, and the HOAs agreed to do that when they built the property. So we can talk more about that if you want to offline, but we would keep that under HOA management and HOA ownership. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I have one other person would like to speak. Please state your name and address.
Same person I was before, Susan Kroll, 1403 Blue Lake Drive in the Waterfall Canyon subdivision. And as far as has been presented to us in previous contacts with Mr. Miles, when it was presented to us, it would be a city park, you mentioned for the use of our residents, but if it's a city park, it's for use of all residents of the city, so anybody can come in there. But it was never specified to us that it would remain totally under HOA control. As a former member of the board for Waterfall Canyon and currently on the architectural and landscape approval committees, we were not told that we are going to still be responsible for all of this. It was our understanding, and it was represented to us, that it would be a city park, the city would assume control of it, the city would assume liability for it, and so on.
I think we're talking about two different things. I think there's some confusion, because usually we don't have this kind of back and forth. I think we're talking about two different things. We're talking about a city park that has a pond that will be a city park maintained by the city, and we're talking about an HOA detention lake that is, and has been, and will always be, the HOA's responsibility. So it sounds to me, just listening to the comments I've heard tonight, that we're talking about two different things. And I would say that our staff would love to sit down and talk to you anytime. It's probably easier, especially for you, sir, a one-on-one conversation in the planner's office or with our assistant city manager, because I think we just can clarify some of these concerns and also take them into consideration for future planning.
Okay, I agree. I would like to have a sit-down with the planner, but I feel as though things had been misrepresented to the HOA previously. And I'm concerned about the additional burden on the homeowners for increased liability and so on, and so we need to have that discussion with Amy.
We cannot, we cannot deal with you as far as what has been told by any developers. We can work with you from the standpoint of what the city's involved with is. So I think our, the suggestions you're hearing here would be to contact our senior planner, Amy, and ask her for an appointment and come in and sit down and discuss those items with her.
Yeah, I most definitely will do that. My earlier concern about access and egress is not on the west side, but more on the east side, how people... Because the west side puts us against the base of Spring Creek Mesa, and we need to get out the other direction. Thank you.
She may be able to help you with that also.
I want to make one last comment. I have referred my concerns to the HOA, and they believe, and I've been told by them, that the city will take over those, those ponds.
Sir, I cannot speak for your HOA, nor can the...
I'm sorry.
I cannot speak for your HOA, nor can the city speak for them. If you have some questions on that, or your HOA has questions on that, then I would contact the city and, if necessary, our city attorney, and they can help you with those.
The only I'm asking, is this a closed book?
Sir, I think we've given you several opportunities. We'd like to move on now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council, I just wanted to pull up a map for you guys to clarify. I think my pointer will point to this, and you can see it where my pointer is. This is the kind of anticipated location of the city park area. And as you can see, there are other ponds that are, you know, outside of this area as well, that I think are being discussed here tonight as well, and kind of outside the scope of tonight's conversation, because it's not related, you know, to the plating of these lots or, you know, the right-of-way vacation that we just discussed as well. I have cards here, so anybody that's wanting to get some from me, I can definitely give them out. And they're more than welcome to discuss these details with myself and with our city engineer, Scott Murphy, as well, outside this meeting. We're more than happy to do that.
All right.
Thank you. I know I volunteered you to talk to them, but I think that, you know, contacting staff and having one-on-one discussions is always really helpful in clarifying this kind of information. It's really hard to clarify it in a, in a public meeting like this with microphones and going back and forth, but our staff is really available.
We have one other individual back here, if you would like to come forward. Please state your name and address.
My name's Steve Cox. Live at 512 Alta Lakes Avenue. Can you put that back up?
Yeah, we can hardly hear you.
My name is Stephen Cox. I live at 512 Alta Lakes Avenue.
It's going to take me a few minutes, so if you want to give your comment too, at the same time you could.
I need that to show them, the lakes they're talking about were just created from a gravel mining on the property that are, that are south of that lake she showed. Those are the lakes they're concerned about.
That rectangle lake, you're saying, south of that, there's additional-
There's additional lake that was created that's the size of a football field.
Are they on the property that we're discussing tonight?
It's adjacent to it, yes.
Well, is it on the property? That's the real question. Because if it's adjacent to it, not on the property we're discussing, that really, that's kind of a, almost a off-the-topic.
It's going to be part of the future development of that, and I think that's why these people are concerned, is those lakes they created, there's no way the HOA could afford to insure those lakes.
I'm going to say, talk to our, talk to our staff. I think they're going to have the most, the best information and be able to help you the most with these-
So that lake you're showing there, your, your map does not show those lakes that they're talking about. There's been some-
It's impossible for us to really discuss it.
Two brand-new lakes that have been created from a gravel mining that are south of that lake, directly south of that lake you're showing.
Yeah, so we really have no information that we can discuss. We don't, we don't see them. We don't know where they are. We don't have dimensions of them. We don't have-
So you're going to make a decision to increase, to accept this without the proper information being shown?
Well, if they're outside, they're outside-
If they're outside of the property we're discussing, then it's going to be a discussion for a future matter.
So plat five is, you're saying, to the, to the north and west of that?
I have a, yeah, I have a question for Steve Stevenson. Is he still here?
Yes, he is.
Thank you. So Mr. Stevenson, we're looking at a final plat tonight, and it includes a specific outline of a property. Are there any, are there any ponds or water detention on the property we're looking at a final plat for tonight?
No.
Thank you.
The, the two new ponds are on the outlaw. And those are future open space areas that would be part of the future development, phase eight or nine, I can't remember. But they, they are pond features. You're right about detention. And there are several others to the west of that that are part of the amenities and landscape area. They're, they're currently bigger than they are designed and you'll see in the plans because they were part of, of some gravel mining that went on.
But they are not part of the-
They are not part of filing five.
Of the final plat that we're approving tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any comments that don't directly apply to what we're dealing with tonight and they are part of a future program, we will not accept any additional comments on those. Thank you.
I think it's important to point out that those other ponds that we can't speak about tonight will be part of another plat approval process.
David Reed, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. In that case, I would consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Waterfall Canyon subdivision filing number five final plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
I have a second part. All right, we have a motion and a second. Will we have a voice?
Doug Glaspo.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Anthony Russo. Mayor Glaspo, we have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Item number 12, resolution 2021-13. This will be presented by senior planner, Amy Sharp.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So this next one shows an overview of our annexation schedule for this project, the Riverbend RV Park Edition 2. You've seen this one a couple times, and just wanted to give you an update on where we're at. We have the Planning Commission zoning hearing coming up on August 11th, and tonight is just the resolution to set a hearing date. So this parcel is a proposed annexation that's approximately .26 acres in size. It's located east of Chapita Road, west of the Uncompagri River, and it's just the northern piece of the Riverbend RV Park. This is basically just a cleanup annexation, so as we were working through some other proposed actions that will be coming before you later in time this year, hopefully, we discovered that there was this small little slither of property that's a part of their property that has not been annexed. So before we move forward with other pieces of their project, we wanted to make sure that this was annexed as well. It meets all of our requirements for annexation, and the zoning of the surrounding area is B2 Highway Commercial District. There's a little bit of R3, as you can see here, and then the P Public District on the river, so we will be asking for the B2 Highway Commercial District to match with their current property. This next slide just shows the intent of the B2 Highway Commercial District, and what they currently are operating under right now does fit in with the intent of this zoning district. Next map just shows the annexation map for your reading pleasure. And then in our comprehensive plan, this is designated actually as public in the future land use map, so it'll probably be a cleanup action you see later in time in the future to kind of make this match with what the zoning is in this area as well, but the little slither here is actually designated as public, but that still fits in with the proposed use as well. This is located in growth area one in our comprehensive plan. This just means that it's the area that represents the most cost-efficient areas in the city for growth. In summary, this does meet all of our annexation requirements. An annexation agreement and impact report are not required as part of this annexation. It is consistent with our public health, safety, and welfare, our annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan, and as I noted, we will be recommending approval of the annexation and the B2 Highway Commercial District. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions for staff? I don't think we've got anybody for public comment. If we have somebody online, none at all. All right. Then I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution 2021-13.
Did I have a second there somewhere?
I'll second.
All right. Could I have a roll call, please?
Doug Glaspo.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Anthony Russo.
Yes.
Mayor Glaspo, we have unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Our next item is resolution 2021-14. And this would be Ross Valdez, planner for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Council, for having me again. That's why. I got a little nervous, didn't want to speak too loud like last time. So, thanks again, Mr. Mayor, uh, Council, for having me again. Uh, as you mentioned, we're re-talking about the resolution 2021-14 for the private activity bond allocation to CHAFPA. The city is actually, uh, well, let me give a little background first. So the IRS allocates a per capita bonding authority annually for housing to each state, also known as PAD, volume capacity or CAP. Colorado in turn allocates this authority to statewide authorities and local governments. In 2021, this year, the allocation for the city of Montrose is $1,091,612. What you're considering today is allocating this, um, private activity bonds to CHAFPA, Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. And what we're looking at is, um, asking them to allocate this towards housing and allowing our community to benefit from this PAD allocation without the city directly issuing these bonds. So for example, in 2020, when the city allocated these bonds to CHAFPA, they worked with the city of Montrose to use the city's PAD allocation to support Steel Properties LLC for the rehabilitation of San Juan Apartments, uh, which serve seniors, Section 8, and residents with disabilities. We've done this for the past three years. We're asking you to do this again, and just again, what I had mentioned at work session is that these bonds are not equivalent to cash. It's not something that the state would give to the city of Montrose in the form of cash. Typically, a local issuer can issue these bonds, which could be the city of Montrose, but it is a administrative burden and also poses some liability. The other option is that the local issuer can assign these bonds to another issuer, another local issuer. A third option is that you can, a local issuer can assign these, uh, bonds to CHAFPA. And the final option is that the local issuer can do nothing, and that DOLA actually would just reappropriate it in their statewide budget. So again, this is our way of making sure that somebody is able to administer these bonds by assigning it to CHAFPA, and it would stay within the Montrose community and would be used to support CHAFPA's home ownership program known as First Step, or potentially a multifamily affordable housing project, or a first-time home ownership investment.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? David, any questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, in that case, I would accept a motion.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-14 as presented.
Trying to find it on the page.
Somebody second.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. We'll take a voice vote.
Doug Glaspo.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Anthony Russo.
Yes.
Mayor Glaspo, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Our next item is item 14. It's a Brown Center building lease and sublease agreement. Uh, this will be staff, specialists, Ross Valdez.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, we're looking at the lease and sublease agreement for the property at 3325 North Townsend Avenue, also colloquially known as the Brown Center. So what we're looking at here is, um, a lease between the city and Tuxedo Corn Company LLC, Tuxedo Corn. Tuxedo Corn entered in the current, entered into the current lease back in 2018, and it expires on September 15 of 2021. So this year, Tuxedo Corn subleases the Brown Center to Montrose Lighthouse. The city is a signator on the sublease between Tuxedo Corn and Lighthouse, which also expires on September 15 of 2021. So you're considering a new four-year lease and a new sublease as well, both with minimal changes. And to highlight some of those changes, what you're looking at on the lease aspect with Tuxedo Corn is that the monthly rate is reduced from $590 per month to $10 per month. This is actually, uh, has already been approved in a July 2019 amendment to the lease that reduced the rent from $590 per month to a dollar per month in exchange for Tuxedo Corn, assuming landscaping, maintenance responsibilities, and costs. This is outlined in exhibit P, uh, exhibit B of the packet in the lease that you're, that you have in hand. This lease memorializes this amendment, and our city attorney has advised that $10 per months, that $10 per month is a standard minimal rate as opposed to a dollar per month. So that's just changing, like we've seen in previous agreements. In addition, you're going to see there's going to be updated monetary limitations provided by the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, that it's in line with previous agreements, modified liability insurance limits in section 16, corresponding with an amendment approved by the city council back in 2018, in addition of language in section 23 concerning termination of lease by LLC. For the sublease, it's even smaller. It's in addition of language in section four concerning compliance with occupancy requirements, and in addition of language in section seven concerning termination of sublease and sub, by sublease. So as you can see, pretty minimal changes to both of these leases, and are there any questions that you have?
Any questions, Council? I don't believe we've got any public questions, so we'll skip that part. I would take a motion.
I move to approve the commercial lease agreement between the city of Montrose and Tuxedo Corn Company LLC and a sublease agreement between Tuxedo Corn Company LLC and Montrose Lighthouse Incorporated for use of the Brown Center building at 3325 North Townsend Avenue as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Please take a roll.
Doug Glaspo.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
J. David Reed.
Yes.
Anthony Russo.
Yes.
Mayor Glaspo, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to item 15, Riverside Park Edition 2 Annexation. Planner William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I do have a presentation to share, so if I could be promoted so I could show that. Thank you. And I don't know why that looks weird. Try that again. There we go. So as stated, this is the annexation hearing and first reading for the Riverside Park Edition 2 Annexation. This was previously presented to you during work session on June 14th, along with the Riverside Park Edition 3. Both of these additions were brought before the Planning Commission on July 14th for its zoning hearing, where a recommendation for the P Public District zoning was made. I'm going to be presenting, doing one presentation for items 15 and 16, but they are separate items. The- There we go. So Riverside Park Edition 2 is located south and west of Shane's Way and east of Chapita Road over by the Cerise Park and the Dog Park. The parcel is approximately 2.09 acres in size. It's within the city's urban growth boundary, the city of Montrose water service area and the city sewer service area. This area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits. And this annexation is being done in order to clean up an orphaned parcel of city-owned property. As I stated, this was taken before the Planning Commission, where they made, made a recommendation for the P Public District. City staff finds that this zoning designation will not have adverse effects on the public health, safety, and welfare. This is also consistent with the surrounding area, as all adjacent land that's within the city is also zone P. In accordance with local and state regulations, parcel owners within 100 feet of the proposed annexation have been notified of the potential annexation. This map before you shows the 100-foot buffer zone, and all intersecting property owners of this buffer zone have been notified. According to our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density medium in the future land use map. The land in these areas may not yet be developed, but the district provides for a variety of residential types, mixed within the neighborhood, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. This parcel is in growth area two, which indicates some level of or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. And in summary, this area is urbanizing, and the parcel meets the contiguity criteria for annexation. The applicant, application is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare annexation policy and the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of the P Public District zoning designation, and city staff recommends approval of the annexation and zoning. Thank you. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff? David Reed, any questions?
No, sir.
And I will open a public hearing and if anyone would like to speak to this item. I see no person's interested in that. We'll close the public hearing and I will consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2021 dash 15 as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. We'll have a voice vote.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank? Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glasbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right. And we also have another, another next item. That's 2021 dash 15.
No, I think we're on ordinance 2549, which is the second part of this annexation. Do you want to ask for public comment or you want me just to make a motion?
Well, actually, I've got to have a public hearing.
Oh, you do have to have a hearing.
And I don't see anybody just jumping up and down. So in that case, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2549 on first reading as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote by voice.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glasbell, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Our next item is item 16, ordinance 2550 on the first reading. Council consideration for ordinance 2550 on first reading in ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, providing for zoning of the Riverside Park Edition Two as a P Public District. And city planner, William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing further to add.
Any additional questions on it? David, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. I'll open up to, uh, no, just take a
Hold a hearing.
Public hearing again. We have none. I'll close the hearing.
I'll move that we pass ordinance 2550 on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glasbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Item 17, Riverside Park Edition Number Three Annexation, and William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, another presentation to share, although this one will be very similar, so I'll breeze right through it. Like before, this presentation will be for items 17 and 18. So the Riverside Park Edition Three is located in the same vicinity, which is south and west of Shane's Way and east of Topeka Road. This is in the corner of the parking lot that's located in the park. This parcel is approximately 0.032 acres in size. It's also within the urban growth boundary, the city of Montrose Water Service Area and the city sewer service area. This parcel meets the contiguity requirements and is also being annexed in order to clean up orphaned parcels. Uh, again, the planning commission recommended the P Public District for the zoning designation. Staff feels that this is, this does not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare. Uh, once again, all adjacent land that's already within the city is also zone P. Landowners within 100 feet of the parcel were notified about the annexation proposal. Uh, this area is listed as residential mixed density medium in the future land use map, which as I said before, provides for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. Uh, this is also in growth area two, indicating some level of or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. This area is urbanizing and more than one-sixth of the parcel is contiguous to city limits. Uh, this proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, city annexation policy, and the comprehensive plan. The planning commission has recommended approval of P zoning and city staff recommends approval of the annexation and of the P Public District zoning. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
All right, any questions? I believe we have to have another hearing on that. Okay, that's public comment. Any public want to comment? No, thank you. And I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt resolution 2021 dash 16 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll have a voice vote.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glasbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Our next item is ordinance 2551 on first reading. And, uh, this will be handled by Mr. Rice. Do you have anything additional to add to that?
I have nothing further to add.
All right. In that case, I'll have a public hearing. Seeing no takers.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2551 on first reading as presented.
Second.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in two seconds.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo? Mayor Glasbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right.
Hold one more hearing.
How about ordinance 25?
No, I just said one more hearing. You can do this.
Ordinance 2552 on first reading. William Reese, do you have any comments on this one?
I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
All right. Then I will open up a public hearing. We have no one on that, so I'll close the hearing and I will consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2552 on first reading as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote, voice.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo? Mayor Glasbell, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Any staff reports? Chief Hall.
I was reminded to be very quick, but I wanted to give you an update. National Night Out was also tonight. Uh, we had a great event. There were up to 200 to 250 people at one point. And I'd really like to commend Sergeant Larry Woody and Billy Stroop with our agency and the commander Ty Cox with the Montrose County Sheriff's Office for putting together a great event, lots of important agenda items tonight. Uh, but we'll have it again next year and hopefully we can all adjourn a little bit earlier and then go out and attend the event. And then secondly, I'd really like to thank our city leadership, our city counselors, and then our public for approving the additional budget tonight. We didn't want to come back and, and ask for that, but our staff is extremely excited. We're, we're energized to be able to move into the building and I really think it's going to just launch our professionalism into the next level in serving our community, so I wanted to say thank you tonight.
Thanks. And congratulations to your staff on a successful community night out. I know we were all planning on going after our quick city council meeting and that is not going to happen, but I'm glad that the public came out and enjoyed tonight.
And I think, uh, I'd like to add one thing for Chief Hall. Congratulations, sir. I know you, you're a very humble person, but congrats on your, uh, citizen award nomination for Friday.
That's great. Any other staff comments? They're free tonight. In that case, any comments from council? David Reed, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
In that case, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good night.